Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council is reconvening from a closed session. There is nothing to report from closed session. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the closed session meeting at 6:02 PM. And go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council on October 28th at 6:02 PM. And Mr. Clerk.
Consistent with executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, October 30th at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, November 1st at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovescity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. City Clerk will run a speaker timer. After the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. With that, Mayor, that will take us on to the roll call.
Right, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
For the roll call, Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
All are present.
All right. Next item is a Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, wherever you are at, please address the United States' flag accordingly, and please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. And 1.3.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to see if we have consent from the Council to close this meeting in honor of Burke Madden, who was the 14-year-old young man that unfortunately was tragically hit and killed on Whitelock Road.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Very sad.
Thank you, Councilmember, for bringing that up. You know, when I first heard about it, my heart broke because it hit so close to home. This is a young man that's the same age as my youngest son, and I can't imagine how difficult it is for the family to go through this, and it's just so tragic. But thank you for bringing that up.
It's a tragic situation, and if we can just send them a proclamation, then I would leave it to the City Clerk to put together something appropriate to express our deepest regret that we won't and they won't see that young man grow up.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So, Mr. Clerk, if you can prepare something, that'd be great.
Indeed.
Right. With that in mind, we will adjourn this meeting in honor of this young man, and at the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the Council would like to invite members of the public to have a moment of silence, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with the family, and we will take a moment to reflect on it. Please join the City Council. Thank you very much. Let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to Section 2, Approval of the Agenda.
Hey, we have an agenda. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
There's a second. Roll call vote, please.
And for the roll call vote that we conduct when we're in the teleconference environment, Councilmember Wen.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Soen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And with that, we have approval 5-0 of the agenda.
Okay, next.
For Section 3, the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda. That will advance us to Section 4, Our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a presentation of recognition to Casunus Community Services District Fire Chief Michael McLaughlin, recipient of the 2020 Fire Chief of the Year Award.
Excellent. Here's the chief here today.
And I believe we do have him on the line. We're just making my connection, catch him through.
Yes, we have Ms. McLaughlin on the line.
All right, Chief, we have, the City Council has a recognition, which I'm going to go ahead and read, acknowledging you as the Fire Chief of the Year for 2020.
Before we get too much further, Mr. Mayor, if I might ask, Fire Chief McLaughlin, if you have any other devices on, we're getting a little bit of feedback, and if you can mute any surrounding computers or things around you, it'll help us with the audio feed coming through.
That sounds pretty good.
Everything's off on my end.
Excellent.
All right. Well, Chief McLaughlin, thank you for joining us this evening. It certainly gives the City Council distinct honor to honor you in support of your service and also recognizing you being Fire Chief of the Year by the California Fire Chiefs Association. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas annually, the California Fire Chiefs Association selects a Fire Chief of the Year, bestowing an annual named, annual award named after retired Chief State Fire Marshal, that is, Ronnie J. Coleman, to recognize those individual, those dedicated professionals and passionate leaders at the forefront at advances in firefighting, leadership, safety training, and technical innovation. And whereas Casunus Community Services District Fire Chief Michael McLaughlin was the recipient of the 2020 Ronnie Coleman Fire Chief of the Year Award, and whereas the Association recognized the 32-year fire service veteran for his work advocating for public safety in the areas of behavioral health, community paramedicine, and wildland fire, and credit him for his part in bringing forth discussion of a national program dedicated to the behavioral health for first responders. And whereas, in addition, Fire Chief McLaughlin actively participates in the Behavioral Health Committee, Sacramento Regional Fire Diversity and Equity Task Force, Joint Defense Council, and the Regional Sacramento Regional Fire EMS Communications Center Board of Directors to provide resources for fire responders and their families, and connect underrepresented and financially disadvantaged persons to the fire service, advocate for legal rights to provide emergency medical services in Sacramento County, and to provide policy oversight to the Regional Joint Powers Authority Dispatch Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and celebrates Fire Chief Michael McLaughlin for his many years of dedicated service to Casunus Community Services District and the community of Elk Grove, and extend the utmost appreciation and respect to Fire Chief Michael McLaughlin for the well-earned distinction as a 2020 Ronnie J. Coleman Fire Chief of the Year, signed on this 20th day of October 2020. Congratulations, Chief. If you'd like to say something.
Mayor Lee, Councilmembers, I am just completely honored and humbled, and thank you so very much for this very kind and generous proclamation. For me, as I came into the fire service and knowing Ronnie Coleman and the pioneer of the fire service that he was, and has I've grown through my career and done what I can to, I guess, to learn from his example and carry things forward, and somebody who I enjoy seeing, and he is a resident of our great community here in the city of Elk Grove, and have the opportunity to meet him for lunch or coffee every once in a while, and continue to learn from him, that even be nominated for this award would put me beyond words, but to actually be, I guess, the recipient of the award for this year just really just renders me completely speechless. Yeah, my goal each and every day is to try to just simply do my job to the best of my ability and leave it better than I found it. Truly blessed to be part of an amazing organization, and it's truly, this award is about the men and women of the Casunus Fire Department and their commitment to service, and, you know, really to our communities of Elk Grove and Gulf, and, you know, and really, you know, that not be willing to accept a level of service than the top-rated service in giving us the ability to excel. And I'm just so very grateful and thankful for this opportunity, for this proclamation, and I think this is the first thing, as many of my staff will attest to, that's truly rendered me speechless in a long time. So, thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, anything to add?
Mayor, this is Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, Chief, nice that you're able to bring recognition to the city and the region for your accomplishments. I've known you for two years now, and you've always been very humble about how you've portrayed your role as the Chief, and, you know, to have these opportunities to bring Elk Grove to the forefront statewide just bodes us well in so many ways, and appreciate all that you've done, appreciate your friendship, and wish you all the best in your upcoming retirement.
Thank you.
Mayor. Mayor, Councilman Soen. Chief, I just want to echo those sentiments. Really appreciate your service. Congratulations on a well-deserved award, and we are honored that you're representing us here in the Elk Grove community, and best wishes on your retirement as well.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Hume. Chief, I echo everything that my colleagues have said. It's an honor for you. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to your department and elevating the Casunus name. And by my calendar, we're down to less than two months to go, so take her easy, buddy.
And Mayor, if I could chime in, also Chief, appreciate you. You deserve this award and many, many more for everything that you've done for this department, and more so than anything, I'd like to thank you for taking the lead on the Footsteps to Fire Program, because as we talk about diversity, and we've talked about this everywhere, your department here under your leadership took the lead in this, and my understanding is that we're starting our second cohort here in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you for leading that. Thank you for being a part of that, and thank you for setting the example for our region around.
Hey, Chief, I did have a question. Is it fishing that you're going to take up or surfing? I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry, I understand that there was a question for me. You were broken. I was unable to hear where the question was.
Yeah, I was asking you, is it fishing that you're going to take up full-time, or is it surfing?
Water-related in one way or another. As I say, my first task is to put additional gears in my transmission. Right now, either I'm asleep or I'm in overdrive. It's trying to find a way to idle and find a decent cruising speed. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chief, for your service and for your commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's move to the next item.
The next item will be Item 4.2, which is a proclamation declaring October 2020 as American Pharmacist Month. And right now, we're just making that transition to hang up the call with the Fire Chief, and then we're reaching out to our student representatives from the College of Pharmacy at the California North State University.
We're ready to go. The caller's on the line.
Okay, and I'd like to invite Councilmember Darren Soen to take the lead on this.
Mayor, I actually asked if I could take the lead on this for the student.
That's fine as well.
Thank you. So, on behalf of all of us here on the Council, we would like to present this proclamation and lead the way, as well pharmacy is one of the oldest of the health professions to the start of the health, only of all, whereas pharmacists typically are given the focus of law, of communication.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Councilmember Wen, your audio on your side's coming, it's a little bit difficult to hear.
Is that better?
That is much better.
Okay.
On the spot.
Great. Whereas pharmacists are specifically educated with a focus and level of expertise on medication therapy and are ideally suited to work collaboratively with other healthcare providers and patients to improve medication use and outcomes by providing services through medication therapy management, and whereas it is important to promote the profession of pharmacy as an essential healthcare provider, and whereas pharmacists provide both expertise and accessibility, which are crucial to patients fully optimizing access to medications that are not self-administered, such as, but not limited to immunizations, and whereas the American Pharmacists Association and the California Pharmacists Association have proclaimed October as American Pharmacist Month with the theme Know Your Medicine, Know Your Pharmacist. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 2020 as American Pharmacist Month in the City of Elk Grove, and urges all citizens to acknowledge the valuable services provided by pharmacists in our community. Sign this 28th day of October 2020 by the entire Elk Grove City Council.
Are the representatives online?
Yes, okay. I'm not sure if that was my cue. Hello, my name is Alex Dennis Wamburg, and I am a student at the ENU, and I want to thank Mayor Lee and the Elk Grove City Council for their continued support and recognition of October as the American Pharmacist Month. As the most successful healthcare provider, we know how important it is to have access to healthcare professionals, especially during these times. While many have been affected by this pandemic, note that we are still working diligently for our community, provided needed access to vaccine, the flu vaccine, and when approved, the FDA COVID-19 vaccine, also being a resource for our community in regards to medication management and COVID-19 testing. Together as a community, we will get through these difficult times together and become stronger and more resilient than ever before. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. You know, this is always a great opportunity to acknowledge those in healthcare, and truly appreciative of the hard work that pharmacists do in, you know, addressing the population as a whole. Thank you, Councilmember Wen, for leading that. All right, any other members?
Yeah.
Hearing that there are no members of the Council who wish to chime in, let's go ahead and move to the next item.
And that next item will be Item 4.3, which is a presentation from the Blue Ribbon Commission on the Establishment of a Sacramento County Women's Commission. And I believe we have a conference call line that we're pulling into the conversation, and this is also going to be a dual effort, as I will be assisting with advancing us through a PowerPoint presentation that's going to be part of this Item 4.3.
Yes, and the callers are on the line.
Good evening.
And you are coming through. If we could just get another confirmation in your name, and that'll help us hear the audio to make sure you're coming through loud and clear.
This is Erin Seberry, and I'm with Dr. Bernice Bastian Martinez and Marty McNue.
Coming in loud and clear. Please proceed.
Thank you. Should we start?
Yeah, go ahead and start. Welcome.
Okay, great. Oh, thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of the City Council. My name is Erin Seberry, and I'm here with my colleagues from the Blue Ribbon Commission on the Establishment of a Sacramento County Women's Commission, Dr. Bernice Bastian Martinez, who's also affiliated with Sacramento State University, and Marty McNue, affiliated with the American Association of University Women. The three of us are all Elk Grove residents, and really delighted and honored to be here tonight, and thank you for your invitation. I'm going to, I want to also thank Councilwoman Yan for her conversations with me prior to this, and for helping to extend this invitation, and also to Kara Reddick, who spent some time, and I'm just really, we're really delighted to learn of all the work, that recent work happening in the city, and with your A-Team member staff team focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that you have some gender equity working groups already in the city of Elk Grove. What I want to do this evening is quickly share with you the highlights of what's now almost a three-year journey, very much a grassroots organizing effort to establish a permanent Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. It evolved last year to become the Blue Ribbon Commission, an interim commission established by unanimous vote of the Board of Supervisors. And so I just want to take you through that journey a little bit, because it's been extensive community engagement and work with just really a group of women that just came together and keep coming, who want to support this, and then we'll, please feel free to stop, and then we'll, Dr. Martinez and Marty have to say a few comments and questions, but stop us anywhere if you have any questions. I do want to say that we're thrilled to be here because there's more than enough opportunity for cities in the county to be involved in this effort, and we'll get to that a little bit. There is even a city initiative that many cities across the country have adopted called the Cities for CEDAW, C-E-D-A-W, which is a framework for a gender equity lens. But we'll just, I'll just start, and we'll tell you a little bit about our journey and where we are, and take questions. So, next slide. It really began, this whole journey that we've been on, with a question, Slide number two, and that question really is, how are the women and girls? We, a few of us who first came together understood that there were a lot of issues in with women and girls and gender equity that a couple of years ago, even before this new wave of Me Too and Understanding, but we looked at it from that early time, from an economic lens, and about women and girls, and what did we know about how they were faring or not? And so we started with the data, Slide three, and we looked at data, and we realized there wasn't very much to tell us, and we started, you know, there's a lot of data in government, as you all know, but how some of it for privacy concerns is not released, and then there's a lot of data that organizations in the county have on their own, but there's no real clearinghouse or space for a lot of this data to come together. This is when we started. Some data's coming into focus now, but this is the gist of what we knew, that a third of women had families in the county live in poverty, under the poverty line or below. About 2,000 domestic violence calls a year, depending on how you counted between police and sheriff, and that's a question. We have the point-in-time count, as you know, for homeless, but many of the folks working with homeless women will say that that night, the point-in-time count, you know, women are often in the shadows and hiding, and for safety reasons, not out as apparent on the streets, so really don't have a really good estimate of the number of women and children homeless on any given night in our county. And we know that women earn 89 cents or less for every dollar earned by men. That number is worse, much lower for women of color. And so that's still where we are, and what we know, there's a lot more data to cover. Next slide. We began small conversations in women's living rooms, meeting some women were at the Women's March. There was a lot of activity here in town about the Women's Marches, and just began asking, what about, what can we do to support women and girls? And we began listening, Slide number five, and as we were listening, issues came up, and this idea of a Women's Commission came to the fore, because we understood that Women's Commission can address many of the issues that we heard. But we had community meetings, we had listening circles and surveys, all volunteer grassroots. Slide number six. And it grew in that first year, year and a half, from a small handful of three or four of us to a core group of about 35 women. And we engaged over the time with close to 1,000 women and girls so far in the county. We had a much bigger work plan as a Blue Ribbon Commission before COVID hit, so we recognize that there's so much more to do. But we kind of had, Slide seven, we, some of the women were marching. Let's see, are we, Jason, are we caught up to Slide seven?
We are good. We are on Slide seven visually, so we're in sync. We're pulling this off. It's going well.
Yeah. Slide eight, we just wanted to give you some visuals of a sense of the women who came together, because really, what can we do to act on behalf of women and girls? It's one thing to, you know, we want something that holds accountability, and what we understood, I think, is as we got deeper into this and asked that question, how are the women and girls in Sacramento County, we realized that there's really no one mechanism, there's no one umbrella anywhere that is accountable for asking and answering that question on a daily basis, and lifting the answers up to policymakers and to the county, which, as we know, has so much oversight and of funds and social services. And so really, that's what Women's Commission, a Women's Commission would do, is be that face of holding that question and the accountability for answering that in that space, along with policymakers, and hopefully with cities too in the county. So, in July of 2019, thanks to Supervisor Phil Sterna, who proposed a resolution to form an interim commission, we were established, and we went into an official Blue Ribbon Commission mode with 38 members, five ad hoc advisory groups, which we opened to the public, and since December of 2019, we held monthly meetings. Slide number 10, our mandate was to advise the board and the public about the viability, really, of a permanent commission in Sacramento County, a prospective Women's Commission. So, that's what we've been doing. I just want to pause here and just take a couple of minutes to just look at what is a Women's Commission? What do women, there's a tremendous legacy of Women's Commissions, both national in the state of California and international. And so on Slide 11, we put in a picture just so you could see the historic, both at the United Nations and here in the United States. They started about 55 years ago, but a Women's Commission, as you know, is dedicated solely to the promotion of gender equity and empowerment of women, and advising government and the public about issues relevant to women's well-being. Slide number 12, the United Nations started the first commission in 1947. In 1961, a presidential commission was chartered under President Kennedy. I put in that picture there with Eleanor Roosevelt, because I have a vision that she kind of put him up to it. She carried the first one, and let's have a sense, she probably did that. I don't really know. But in the 1960s and 70s, commissions on the status of women and girls spread like wildfire throughout the country. And next slide, California was no different. I think I messed up the slide order here, but the slide number 14 is on California. We have in California, our California Commission on the Status of Women and Girls was started in the 60s, and really was at the forefront of much of the work on gender equity work throughout the country. There are now today 26 city and county commissions, and six of the eight largest counties in California have Women's Commissions. I'm sad to report that Sacramento County, not yet one of them. But on Slide 13, there's a picture there of our friends in the San Francisco Women's Commission, who are very dynamic and have helped educate us about possibilities and expand our imagination of what's possible in promoting gender equity and safety, and advising government. I mean, they've advised, they've worked closely with the city police in San Francisco. They've done everything from analysis of where streetlights are, to help women walking from the bar to businesses and whatnot. But they've done some really incredible gender work on some domestic violence, where they literally have. they literally have a budget of $17 million annually that goes through them and their Office of Women's Policy to gender analysis on, on things like public works, like the streetlight example. So they've been a real inspiration to us. They also were at the forefront of promoting something called Cities for CEDAW, which is taking the International Convention on the Elimination of Discrimination Against Women and bringing it local to cities. And, and when the Council of Mayors met in San Francisco a few years ago, the United States Council of Mayors, the Council of Mayors adopted that as a project to promote Cities for CEDAW. And that's something more we can talk to you about if you're interested because as a city, you could adopt that, which gives you a framework for a gender lens through which to make some policy decisions. And, you know, I want to just pause and say on that, it doesn't mean that the men get left out of that, but, you know, we can have a conversation about how when we lift up 50% of the population, maybe 51% or more, and, and, and give them the opportunity, you know, we lift all boats, so it's not a matter of leaving anyone out in our framework. And that Cities for CEDAW framework has, they've done a lot of work internationally, nationally and locally in cities to, to do that well. The City of San Jose just adopted that recently and there are a few other cities in California who have that. But our Blue Ribbon Commission activities since December, we've had our monthly meetings, we had to go to Zoom, we, we had a work plan which involved continuing deep engagement that we had done as the grassroots. And, and part of our work plan was to go to city councils throughout the county. We really got, you know, hit as everyone did with COVID and trying to learn to Zoom and how do we come back and keep our work plan going? So we're so delighted that you invited us because that's one of the things we didn't get to was to go to all the city councils. And so you're our person, we're delighted that you are, for Nathan, Marty and I, our residents here. But we researched Women's Commissions throughout California. We continued to ask the question, how are the women and girls? And, and we had wanted to continue with some of our listening circle model that we had developed toolkits for, but again, we had to move to surveys a little bit. And then we had a big virtual forum October 10th with 145 women from around the county. So just quickly on slide 16, you'll get a sense of, we also had many partner organizations from women's organizations throughout the county. This was a big community meeting we had at the Girl Scouts pre-COVID. Gives you a sense on slide 16 of how many, how dynamic these community meetings were where we asked women to prioritize issues and what a Women's Commission might do. Slide 17. We held listening circles, we developed a listening circle toolkit based on a World Cafe model of facilitation. And we, women's organizations like My Sister's House, Weave, A Community for Peace, Women's Wisdom Art, some high schools, St. John's Program for Real Change, hosted those listening circles and with women that, with whom they were working. And just on slide 18, you'll see we had a big kickoff on International Women's Day last year. And on slide 19, you'll see we had over 100 Asian Pacific Islander women from all over the county come together, sponsored and partnered My Sister's House. And I just wanted to give you a flavor. And the other thing that we did with our listening circles on slide 20 is we partnered with Women's Wisdom Art, a wonderful, small organization in, here in the county in Sacramento that, that, that works with women who've suffered from trauma and healing in art. And so we had each woman in listening circle answer the question, how are the women and girls, through a panel and then they rolled them together in beautiful quilts, which are now on display at the Impact Boundaries. We'd love to invite you to, when we get out of our COVID isolation, display some of the quilts too, and we'd love to have some listening circles in Elk Grove going forward. And some of the topics that emerged on 21, so many topics came through in these listening circles, but, and some of them are ones that you would have imagined. I'm going to go through and talk a little bit more about what we did and then I'll get to just speaking about the data because there were some surprises. On slide 22, we went into, we did surveys and, and we did a lot of one-on-one interviews with community leaders. And so on slide 23 shows, this is from one sample of our respondents, but pretty much across the data that we've uncovered, that safety and violence are still huge issues for women and girls. Time and time again, that came up as number one. Healthcare, very high. And economic wellbeing, which, which runs a gamut, we summarize economic wellbeing, but that includes access to the workforce from education to job training to pay equity, affordable and accessible childcare, and many more issues. But one of the things that came up over and over, and I was glad to see that you have already addressed this in one of your programs, is mentoring. We were surprised at how often we heard from women that they want more access to mentoring opportunities. And some job training goes hand in hand with that. So it looks like you're already addressing some of that. But if you look at the fourth issue, housing and homelessness, that's not far behind the other top three. And one of the things we've heard a lot from particularly our senior women, you know, and I'm sure this is no surprise to you all as policymakers, but we're seeing women, particularly those who are not homeowners and on fixed incomes, rapidly descending into either homelessness or poverty because they cannot continue to make their payments. And we don't yet have a clear idea of how many and what COVID has done to that. And this, by the way, I should say that this slide is pre-COVID. Childcare was, was up there. And now on slide 24, when we get to COVID, we haven't done as much extensive listening, but we've done a lot of our one-on-ones and we had our big forum on the 10th of October where we, where we heard more about how this emergency environment, and as you all know, it's not just COVID, it's, it's, it's the economy. And then for some women, particularly seniors and the disabled, even though, you know, some of them, the power outages in the outer parts, because it didn't hit so much where we are, but, and even the smoke filled times had, you know, were very challenging. And so, but overall, and I, you've seen this in the national press a lot, that women are disproportionately affected by this crisis. It's challenging hard-fought gains for women in the workforce. And as we all know, there's still a clear gender division in many ways of labor in the workforce, women in the service industry and essential workers, teachers and nurses, and it was, when it comes to caregiving. So even the women that we have in our Blue Ribbon Commission, we know, we know, we, every time we start our meetings, it's how are we doing and whatnot because the women in our Blue Ribbon Commission, and many of whom are not, some are, some of them are essential workers, but many not, but even for our women, for us, we've all been affected as well, you know, the whole population's been affected. So I, I don't want to suggest that we're not all suffering from this. But, but it, it is hitting women particularly hard in certain areas. Women own businesses, as we know, the Sacramento region has a high percentage of women own businesses, which we're glad about, but those have been affected greatly. We don't yet have the numbers. I think the Chamber of Commerce, who, the Metro Chamber folks were at our forum and talking about that and they're, they're doing some number analysis. And, you know, we, we believe that women are essential to driving economic recovery and that if we can take care of our women, you know, and make sure that there's a strong foundation there, it, it helps our economic recovery. So slide number 25, just to summarize the key things we've heard in this almost three years of listening. Women are under extreme pressure during the pandemic and the economic crisis. In these listening circles and coming together, what was so profound for us was that there were moments when the women would, would just say, time and time again, we heard, this is so amazing just the coming together. We have come up with ideas together just by, just by being together and we want to be heard more, we want to be represented more fully. We want and need more access to resources. There are many that exist, but many women talked about not having the awareness of them or access. And what was great in the coming together is that we were able to bridge some of that and folks who are in service delivery were able to say, we have these resources. And sometimes it's in the coming together that you can bring this nexus between government and, and community service delivery and the community together. And so that, that was something that we already found was useful as a resource, even as a Blue Ribbon Commission on an interim basis. There's a lot to say about more integration of resources, we don't have time tonight. Cultural awareness and responsiveness for diverse communities of women, we've heard a lot, and this is no surprise to you all, I'm sure. And particularly in some places in the outer regions of the county and whatnot, you know, there's, as we know, there's a core in Sacramento City proper that gets a lot of attention and we want to be a commission that gives more attention to the county and, and, and also to diverse communities of women because we know that within the umbrella of women, specific communities have specific needs. And I think, it might have been City Councilwoman Yan who was, who was talking to us, but a couple of people brought this up as well about, you know, you can't just say all Asian women or all Latino women, you know, you have, there are specific communities within communities. And a Women's Commission, we would hope, would be able to be, be doing, listening and raising up the diversity within diverse communities. And the last thing I really want to say about this is that data emerged as a huge issue. Folks want a clearinghouse for data because we don't really know so many things, but we know the data's there and we can collect it. So the next steps for our Blue Ribbon Commission, we're kind of at the end of our road here in terms of our interim mandate. We're finalizing our report to the board this week. We are wanting to continue to engage and to listen. That's how we are modeling what we hope a Women's Commission will do. It will be one of our main recommendations is that a Women's Commission in this county continue on the model of this grassroots engagement that we've begun and we're painfully aware that we haven't yet gotten to what our hope was, which is the outer reaches of the county and some more sectors of women that traditionally are not heard from. And, and also in our work, we need to do more of that. We have a community letter of support that will be presented to the board. We invite any of you who want to sign that letter of support to do so with us. We're presenting on November 17th and in December we'll have our final meeting. And that gets us to here. On slide 27 is maybe a quick conversation after my colleague shares some remarks about how we can partner with you, the City of Elk Grove, and how can we support your efforts here in terms of equity and the great work that you've begun and the gender equity working groups that you've done? And how can we integrate the works of the city and the work of the county? Hoping that we do get a Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and that the supervisors do approve it. And then if you wanted to be part of Cities for CEDAW, we can give you that information. So I'll, I'll turn it right now to Dr. Martinez, Basa Martinez, and then Marty McNew for some quick remarks.
Thank you, Erin, and good evening to all of you. Again, thank you for your willingness to have us as part of your agenda. I just want to remind us of the significance of a commission that focuses on women and girls. All of us, every one of us, no matter our status or station, there are women and girls in our lives. They might be sisters, daughters, mothers. They might be children, friends, neighbors. To ensure that they are getting all that they need to survive and to thrive. It is through partnering with commissions on women that elected officials and other representative organizations will have access to additional information, data as we've been talking this evening, that will help better inform the decisions they make. Decisions that we want to say we will be insured to equitably, positively support all of the citizenry. Thanks again for this opportunity and I know Erin will take questions in a moment.
Thank you, Dr. Mart, Basa Martinez. Marty?
I just wanted to quickly add, I am a member of the American Association of University Women and we have two active groups here in the Sacramento area that, and both clubs have been active from the, from the beginning on this effort. And we have been working for equity for women and girls since 1881. And so we're just delighted to be able to be part of this process to continue that effort. I'm, I'm just really glad to represent Elk Grove in that effort as well.
And I just wanted to say that I want to thank AAUW, they've been our fiscal sponsor and an amazing help. And really we've been partnering and this is part of the model we want to suggest for the Women's Commission going forward is deep partnerships in the community. We have also partnered with Sacramento State, the dean of the College of Arts and Letters and Dr. Basa Martinez helped organize a listening circle of over 100 women, which was one of our most dynamic listening circles. They have connected us with their internship program, a restorative justice program so that we have a young woman intern from Sacramento, a student from Sacramento State as an intern. So these partnerships like with Women's Wisdom Art and the other organizations. And, and so that's a model we'd like to continue. We'd love to partner with Elk Grove. If you have any questions or comments.
Are there any questions, members?
I have a question, maybe a comment, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Great. So, you know, Ms. Seberi, I, I want to thank you for presenting today, both you, Ms. McNew and Dr. Martinez, as well to you and I. Ms. Seberi, I have had several long hours of conversation about this commission and my support behind it and, and how much I appreciate you taking the leadership of this and doing all the work behind what it takes to make sure that our women and, and girls are represented and, and have the right tool to move forward and be successful. What I wanted to see was the amount of partnerships and organizations that were a part of this and you, and you listed it. You talked about My Sister's House and, and Weave and Planned Parenthood. And as we talked about, as we talk about policies and what works here for, for women and girls in our city, you and I both know that policies don't work unless there are service that are backing it up for this community. And what I liked, that I saw is that you have that. You have organizations that are service providing to make sure that our women and girls, if they come to you with issues, with barriers, with problems, that there is an organization led by a woman that can provide that service as well. And one of the things I heard you all say is integration and partnership and that we don't want to reinvent anything. And the fact that the three of you reside here in our City of Elk Grove and that you're taking the lead on this is huge for us here in the city and that we should take this opportunity to invest in this, but also partner with you on how we can grow this commission and take this and do what is needed to support the women here in our city. I know you listed a couple of things that you wanted our support on and you wanted to have conversations with us. I'd love to be a part of that, to help you, help all of you around this, but also taking a look at some of the things that we can do here in our city for 2021 because I think there are a lot more that we can do as we are a growing city and that we have a huge amount of young women that want to get involved and are trying to find an avenue to get involved. And the fact that you are leading this effort here, I think it's a great tool to, to put them into this pathway and, and have mentors such as yourselves and some of the other women that are on this commission as well too. So thank you so much for presenting and for being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I just want to say that I think that there's, once we get a commission in 2021, you know, we'd be delighted to, as a commission, work, you know, here in the city and, and, and work on initiatives. I mean, we talked about the model, we want to have task forces and engagement and also youth being a high priority. The youth who are on our Blue Ribbon Commission ask that we not have Um, the youth who are on our Blue Ribbon Commission ask that we not have the two youth on the commission, that they want three, and they, and they have a very active youth advisory group and they want to continue that, um, with the Women's Commission. So we want to have these task forces, like we've had our AdHoc committees where more of the public can be involved from different sectors of the county, right, and have input. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, this is Mayor Steve Lee. You know, I, I just want to say, you know, this is very informative and I know that there's been conversations out in the community talking about perhaps maybe creating one. Uh, I didn't realize how far along, um, this, uh, Blue Ribbon, um, you know, uh, commission effort, uh, is. I would be interested in this process if, in the event that you are, are doing your research, whether it's necessary for even the City of Elk Grove to create one of our own. Um, or, I mean, considering that, um, there are residents that are serving a leadership role in, in this, uh, Blue Ribbon Commission, I will look forward to relying on, um, you know, policy recommendations that you may have.
Yeah, if I could just say to speak to that, Mayor Lee, and thank you for speaking to that. You know, um, the City of LA and the County of LA, they each have a women's commission. You know, LA County is huge and the city, but even as huge as LA is, they, they sometimes, um, they sometimes end up competing for resources or whatnot and it, they, I don't want to say step over each other, but there's sometimes confusion, you know? And so we've seen in the models in the counties that it works much better if a county commission, um, with intentionality, you know, uh, there's a county commission and it includes the cities and, and, um, so that's what I think, certainly my personal recommendation would be based on the research that we've done. Um, and, you know, maybe that's something Marty and Dr. Basta Martinez were finalizing our recommendations, that we should write something that, that, that has specificity about the intention of this commission would be to, you know, work with the cities within the county as well, you know?
Mayor, this is a council member, Soon. Uh, I also want to thank you all for, for being here this evening. I agree with the mayor, this was very informative. I want to thank Councilmember Nguyen for arranging, uh, this opportunity for us to learn about your organization. And I, I stand ready to support you on how you want to be supported or how, where you need the help. Uh, it's, it's, um, great to hear that a few of you live in Elk Grove, so, uh, that should be easy way to contact us and keep in touch. But when you're ready, I'm happy to sit down with you and, as well as to, just to figure out how we can support you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Hi, Erin, this, and, and this is Pat Hume. First of all, it's nice to hear from you. Uh, hope you've been doing well.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to congratulate you on what I'm sure has just been fulfilling work to, to put this all together and, and embark on this journey. And to kind of echo something that was just mentioned by Councilmember Soon, Councilmember Nguyen before that, what a testament to Elk Grove that the three of you are Elk Grove residents that have been tapped to, uh, do this. And I, I think one of the things that it's important that I pulled away that people hear is that this isn't a zero-sum game. And that in order for us to check in and see how women and girls doing, it's not to say that we should ignore men or boys, um, but that, that rising tides do raise all boats. And, you know, uh, one of the things that the, the late Justice Ginsburg said when asked how many women should be on the Supreme Court, and she answered nine. And when questioned further, she said, well, there's been many courts made up with all nine being men and nobody batted an eye. And so I think the larger issue wasn't necessarily what the ideal mix was, but, but rather what we view as extraordinary or, or more, uh, dangerously what we accept as normal. And so, you know, I think awareness is the key to understanding bias and, um, and, and the DEI efforts that, uh, that need to happen. And so congratulations and good luck. And, and as has been said, um, should this move forward with the county, I would like to see how we can, uh, partner in, as Elk Grove.
Thank you, Pat. Really appreciate those remarks.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
This is Vice Mayor Detrick. You know, thank you for the presentation. Thank, it's, uh, nice to hear from our friends that we've dealt with on a number of different occasions. And I think this is, uh, an awesome program. And I know that Councilmember Nguyen spent quite a bit of time with you on this, and I think she would be obviously the perfect liaison for the city. And then from staff, it sounds like Kara Redden's already been involved as well. So from, I would highly recommend still keeping engaged with, uh, the two of them. And I, I think it's totally appropriate to have it at a county level with a partnership from the city, whatever that may look like as you move forward. I wholeheartedly support that. And thank you, thank you for giving a, a, a beautiful presentation, very detailed, and I think, I think it's way overdue with the support for this.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that.
Welcome.
This is Mayor Lee. Um, you know, one thought did occur, perhaps Councilmember Nguyen, um, maybe this could be in, on an annual basis, getting a regular report, um, from our three residents.
Right, I think, um, more than an annual report, Mayor Lee. I appreciate that. I would love to, every time we have something, and I give my council report to report back on, on this. Um, and I just want to echo what the Vice Mayor said, is that I don't think we need to start one here within our city. I hear what Ms. Seberia is saying is that when you start one in every city, it gets confusing and, and things don't necessarily play out right. And so having a countywide one and having three of our residents here being a part of that and leading that is, um, puts us ahead of the game on all of this. And so I, I'm in support of just, um, being supportive of this here and, um, being a part of that instead of starting our own women's commission here within our city. But, uh, I would love to give reports back every time we have something to, to share, um, as I work with these three individuals.
Excellent. Are there any other questions?
No, thank you so much for all of your comments and support and your willingness to work together, and we will honor that and follow up. And I, I wanted to just invite the women of Elk Grove as well, who might be listening to this. We will be also, once we get a commission, we hope to establish a 501(c)(3) Friends of the Commission that can do some, you know, fundraising and fun things and support the work of the commission. And we invite, we have some amazing community members here who know how to get things done. So, um, we, we welcome them in, in the cause and, and, and all of you and all of your support, too. And, you know, and also there have been men who've been on women's commissions, you know, it's, it's, uh, I think John Burton served on the California Women's Commission at some point. So I don't know if that, you know, but, um, so, you know, this is a cause for all of us, as, as Dr. Bernice Basta Martinez said, you know? So thank you so much for inviting us here. Thank you again, Councilwoman, um, Nguyen, for, for all of your time and, and thoughtful input, too. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's move to the next item.
And our next presentation item will be item 4.4, which is the Diversity and Inclusion Commission's annual update. I think we're just making the connection and pulling in, I believe it's Chair and Dr. Bhavan Perik, who will be providing this presentation.
Mr. Perik is on the line now.
Hi, uh, Mayor and City Councilmembers, good evening. Can you hear me clearly?
You are coming through loud and clear, Dr. Perik, and we have your visuals on your presentation as well, so please proceed.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Diversity Inclusion Commission, I'm very thankful to all of you for giving this opportunity to present our annual update. So I would request Kristen to move to slide two, which is a commission background. So, uh, we, we've known until now, until last year as a multicultural committee, and then, uh, we were given a very fancy nickname, Diversity Inclusion Commission in July of last year. And our responsibilities are, number one, we want to promote and educate our community about, uh, to understand our cultural differences and to assist with various cultural events and activities. We also serve as a community cultural ambassador to solicit feedback and to provide information from community to city council and to assist city to eliminate, prevent all forms of biases, hate, and discrimination. And the last is to provide council feedback where we advise council on best practices to conduct outreach activity to our diverse community with a goal to create more accessible, safe, inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community. So these are the three main goals we serve. And, uh, as you know, this year due to COVID-19, uh, we, uh, all had a, you know, social distancing rules. And despite of those limitations, we were able to stay very proactive, uh, we stayed very engaged, uh, and had so many events. So I'm very thankful to our wonderful, uh, fellow team members. And I would like to acknowledge by, uh, you know, by saying their names. So I'm very thankful to Jessica Carter, our Vice Chair, Arjumand Azmi, Mohinda Singh, Dr. Ashok Shankar, Jyoti Dollar, Dr. Raymond Hes, Kauta Marksmoto, Gurjatink Randhawa, Christopher Tan. And I'm very blessed and proud to have them in our commission. They're very helpful. So what activities we have done this year, uh, in January, we had a very meaningful, very beautiful breakfast, uh, to celebrate MLK Martin, the Martin Jr.'s legacy. It was in Laguna Town Hall and several of us went there along with the mayor, city council members, and we had a very beautiful ceremony. And then we walked, uh, for March of Dream Walk, that was, uh, on Sacramento City College. That was a four, five mile walk. And we went there to support and, and stand, stood there in solidarity with the African American community. And then unfortunately, due to COVID-19, everything stands tall, uh, but we decided to do all activities virtually. And it, it is working out very well. Uh, we, uh, conduct all of our business meetings online, maintaining social distancing rules. So in the beginning, uh, during our first virtual meeting, we invited, uh, US Attorney Office, uh, who are doing a wonderful job. They are partnering with different interfaith organizations to eliminate, uh, racism and hate crimes. So we express our desire to work with them, uh, and, uh, moving forward, we'll have so many, uh, you know, collaborative efforts and events with them. We also invited our respected police, uh, Chief Timothy Wright, who came and updated about, uh, you know, what they are doing to promote cultural diversity in the police force, uh, to support African American community, especially with the recent events. And then we had American Leadership Forum training. Next slide, please. As we all know, early this year, we had a very unfortunate event happen, uh, you know, with that of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, uh, and many other African Americans who have lost their lives in a senseless ex of racism and injustice. So we were very disturbed and we called in special meeting to, uh, express our concern and to show our support for, uh, African American community people and also people of color. And we issued a statement, uh, which is there in the slide, a very, uh, strong and powerful statement. And we go to continue supporting, uh, our wonderful leaders and the community members from African American community to show our ongoing support and to listen to their concerns. Uh, next slide, please. I stated, uh, what we have done is, uh, we moved all activities virtually and, uh, we were unable to do live multicultural festivals, which usually falls in the month of August. And also, uh, we always have this Diversity Month preceding our cultural, uh, multicultural festivals. So we decided to join both events and we, uh, came up with a very innovative, uh, event to, uh, support all different cultural, uh, you know, uh, community members, uh, from different faith, different religion, different ethnicity. So we had so many activities online, uh, to reflect various faith traditions, to show our appreciation for cultural, uh, you know, expression through dance. Uh, we had a very, various events to, uh, to, uh, you know, cultural culinary delights, favorite tip throughout the world. We had a lesson in a self-discipline, many activities on arts and crafts. Uh, there are so many events we have done in the month of August, 30-plus events. There are a few listed here in the slide, which is an Indian cooking class we did, uh, you know, uh, classics. We had a discussion on pandemic and racism. We had a turban tying workshop. And we had a virtual tour, uh, to, uh, from our local restaurant, uh, run by Marie Mertz on a Toro Untoko. It was very successful. We had a dance from Taisha, Tahitian Lua dance, and we had a Bahari faith, uh, tradition exploring, the tradition from Bahari, different faith religion. We had so many activities, like Muslims, uh, explaining Muslim core values, basic of six religions, native spirit charity. We had a dance on folk dance from India, from Philippines, Chinese classical dance, American square dance, Latin American salsa, long dance. Uh, we had a demonstration on, uh, different, uh, cooking items from different parts of the world, like Nigeria, Africa, chicken curry, Nazi-making, Indian dishes, et cetera. We had a yoga meditation classes, Chinese art mastering, our feelings and emotions from Brahmapakumari, Filipino martial arts, and Tai Chi. And then we had a wonderful event, uh, if you can move the slide, next slide. Where we did, uh, we brought our well-known artist from our Elk Grove, who are our native from Elk Grove, David Garibaldi. That was a hit and successful, so we had so many people watch him live. And, uh, he was amazing and I'm very thankful to our city council member, Patrick Hume, who went there and interviewed him live. I personally enjoy watching, uh, you know, Pat, uh, asking him, you know, amazing questions. So it was a very successful event. He painted, uh, Mother Teresa, MLK Jr., Statue of Liberty, and Black Panther artist Chadwick Bozeman. And he donated four, um, art pieces to us. And I understood that Mother Teresa piece was donated to Elk Grove Bank. And, uh, MLK and Statue of Liberty art pieces are going to be already placed in, uh, our District 56 building. So that was, came out one of the best events so far. We also did, uh, drive-through, uh, distribution for our, uh, Elk Grove kits. Uh, we distributed more than 200, uh, cook items, kit items to how to make a different art. And, uh, we had so many folks, parents came along with their kids, and, uh, to see their smiling faces was so rewarding. And, uh, our many commissioners showed up and supported that event. We maintained the social distancing and, uh, we got a lot of support from city staff. So we are very thankful to, uh, Julie, Kristen, and everyone who supported our events throughout the month of August. And if you see the next slide, uh, which has, uh, pictures of our Diversity Month, uh, next slide will have a live painting performance from David Garibaldi. In the next following slide, we have Diversity Month data, which is so, uh, we had 1154 website page views. And for David Garibaldi, we had a 4.9,000 engagement and, uh, 8.3, uh, people have watched the videos, more than 8,000 people. So it was very great. So it was a very great event. Next slide. So we are not sitting quietly. We are going to continue to be proactive to support more events. We have another event coming on November 10th where we are going to continue our tradition of festive lights to educate our community about how different cultures celebrate festive light. It's going to be virtual event on November 10th, 6:00 PM. So we invite all of you to come and attend the event. Next slide. Moving forward, we are going to work with our consultant to present different diversity sessions. We'll have a quarterly community educational series where we will learn more about different cultures. Our commission is currently working on a guidance, working guidance document to have a better understanding of our roles. It's in the process and we're going to continue pursuing more outreach opportunities and continue having more cultural celebrations and events. I'm again very thankful to this opportunity given to us and we always get a great support from mayor, city council members, city staff. And I'm very proud to say that living in Algro is amazing thing. We have a very diverse population. We support each other. We always support each other during our difficult times and we are creating an example of better community for other cities. And I'm very proud for, proud of our work. And I'm always very thankful to our fellow commissioners. So I like to keep it open for any comments or questions you may have.
Any questions, comments, members?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Sun.
Go ahead.
Bob, and I just want to thank you for, you and the entire commission for all your work throughout this year. I know it's been difficult. And I also want to thank you for embracing your new roles as commissioners. You know, we, we talked about, you know, just what that would mean and I feel like you guys have stepped up accordingly. And so I just want to express my gratitude in that and just look forward to working with you as the year continues. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your comment.
Dr. Perick, this is Mayor Steve Lee. And along those lines, I know that Councilmember Sun and I had gone before the commission, I can't remember exactly when, asking for the commission to step up and do a little bit more. I know that with COVID-19, that's kind of threw a wrench in some things that the commission could be doing. But have you noticed any uptick in requests for members of the public to talk to commissioners or anything of that sort? Has the workload been pretty consistent?
Yeah, we, our, you know, workload remains the same, but the challenging, whenever we do any activity, we have to think very globally to make sure that we do the safe event, maintaining our social distancing. So it adds more challenge in that sense. We have to explore and come up with a creative idea. So before doing a live event, it was so easy. We knew the process, protocols, and now it puts us in a difficult spot, but we cannot continue with our, you know, encouragement, our energy to provide more events, you know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I still have a little question.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Detrick and I just wanted to thank all of the commission for their, you know, ongoing support over almost the last decade now. And we've seen it blossom from just a concept, concept to what it is today and what you're able to do to help bridge the gap with all the diversity that we have here in Elk Grove is phenomenal. And, you know, I appreciate everything you're doing and even though, oh, I will not be on the council in another six weeks or so, I'll still be in the background supporting you as long as I'm here in Elk Grove.
I, I, I have to do everything, Doctor. But I do have a question. The Festival of Lights is that, you said that's going to be done virtually, right?
Yeah, that will be virtual, all events are virtual. So Festival of Light will be a Zoom event on November 10th.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to, if we can get some information, I really enjoy that event every year and it's too bad we're in the situation that we're in. And I would like to make sure that I watch that because I've enjoyed it every year that I've gone. You all do such an amazing job on this and given what we're going through right now, I'm very impressed with everything this commission has done. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comment and we'll have a slide out soon next, early next week. And again, I'm very thankful for all your ongoing support and please send us any feedback, suggestion if you have for us to improve. We do our best. Sometimes we can make a mistake and I really apologize if we have caused any mistake or problem, but we do our best to improve every year and we continue to have more events down the road because we want to put our city of Algro in the, you know, map of the United States that we are very culturally diverse community.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Excellent. Thank you, Doctor. And please give our regards to the commissioners for hard work that has been put into this commission. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you very much for your comment again. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's move to the next item.
With that, that'll advance us to Section 5, our general public comment. Participating members of the viewing audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public within the subject manager jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less. If a large number of requests are received on a particular subject, city council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those participating members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for this evening on general public comment, there was one written comment that was received earlier today. It was circulated to full council and staff. And then we have four callers that have signed up to speak during our general public comment. I believe the staff team is pulling together our callers as I'm speaking and they'll pull in the first caller once they are available and on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. And per our discussion at the last meeting with the concern raised by Councilmember Hume, I know that Mr. City Attorney Hobbs, you've mentioned that you were going to be looking into, to see to what, what extent public comments could include. And do you have any findings on that or is it pretty much status quo as before?
No, my, my conclusion is the same as last time, given that is a, public forum is very difficult to look at the topics.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Hobbs, for looking into that. And, you know, for the members of the public, I just want to remind everyone, the council does really appreciate your comment and your input on city business issues. But, you know, with all due respect, you know, I do ask each and every one of you that if you have a campaign-related or political, or political race-related comment, please make sure you take that on the campaign trails and let's try to maintain some decorum here. Thank you very much.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and state council members. There's just one matter I'd like to speak on and that's the notion mentioned several weeks ago about defunding the police. In truth, defunding the police really means abolishing the police. Some people make it sound like it's a reallocation of funds and resources to help initiate and foster new ways of policing communities. It's not. The end game is to get rid of cops. Ask Bobby Sing Allen about it. She supports Black Lives Matter, a self-proclaimed Marxist group intent on abolishing the police. She marched with Black Lives Matter. I just find ironic that she plays weekend warrior as an activist with Black Lives Matter and then announces that the EG Police Reunion enforced her. So to police leadership, she's not for abolishing the police and yet marched with Black Lives Matter to send that very message of abolishing the police, which isn't. It's whichever suits Bobby's needs and gets what she wants. I recently visited friends in Minneapolis. You know that city in Minnesota with the city council decided to defund the police and then use taxpayer money to pay for their own private security? As of August, reports stated that nearly 200 police officers have filed to leave the Minneapolis Police Department. That doesn't even include the ones that already quit. Violent crime has surged to record highs across Minneapolis this year. Prosperous neighborhoods typically experienced, few such incidents have seen an increase, while the heaviest toll is still in the city's poorest ethnically diverse areas. There was a Dane shooting in North Minneapolis at a P Week football game. Parents and coaches had to become John McClain from Die Hard to save these innocent kids. The streets of Ground Zero, where the George Floyd riots started, is still in shambles. People in these areas believe businesses won't rebuild and I agree with them. Is there a correlation between defunding the police and crime? For the answer, we don't have to look any further than the cities in Minneapolis and Chicago. Cautionary tales every American politician should learn from. By not supporting our officers and defunding the police, it seems political leaders put votes in their own self-interests as head of the concerns and safety of the people. I remain hopeful that despite how ignorant and out of touch some of the Elk Grove city council members are, you're all in agreement with me that defunding the police is not just a bad idea, it's a deadly one. Thank you and have a great night. And Mayor Lee, good luck on your election, reelection.
I concluded the speaker's comments. We'll be pulling in our next speaker under Section 5, General Public Comment. And it sounds like we're making the connection. Now it's just a matter of patching them into the meeting. All right.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mark Graham. All right. I hope everybody's having a good evening. I'm going to try and make it a little bit better. I'm glad that there's going to be a women's commission and I don't think that Black Lives Matter is a Marxist group, but that's not what I wanted to talk to you about. I sent each of you an email this evening, council members, also Mr. Lindgren, Mr. Berman, and Mr. Hobbs, and the subject line is AIRGIG, A-I-R-G-I-G. Study it, study the city's options, and prohibit it. All right. This, of course, has to do with cell antennas. You'll see, my email, first of all, is brief and there are two visuals in there, which I have been told are good ways to make a point. Also provided a link to an article on the Children's Health Defense website. And what we're talking about is AIRGIG, I think another name for it is strand-mounted cell antennas. But it's a way, this, and AIRGIG is an AT&amp;T thing, but I'm sure the other carriers are going to have their own version. It's a way for them to circumvent the city's municipal code, the city's zoning code, and also to circumvent, I think, the master license agreements that these companies have signed with the city. And literally what they do is they install a cell antenna on a distribution line. When I say distribution line, I mean not, it's a power line, it's an elevated power line that's mounted on a utility pole. So, and from there, you know, it blasts away with broadband and hazardous electromagnetic radiation in all directions. Okay, so I'm asking the council to look into this and see what you can do to prohibit them. It's, first question would be, is, are these considered in the public right of way? I think so. And the council could simply require a permit, require the carrier to obtain a permit from the city prior to installing any of these strand-mounted or AIRGIG antennas. Oh my goodness. Does that mean my time's up? All right. Anyway, please look at your options.
Still have a minute, Mr. Graham. Please continue. You still have one minute to wrap up.
Thank you. This would also be a good time for the council to hear from Mr. Hobbs about the full extent of the city's regulatory powers over whether it's strand-mounted or any other kind of cell antennas, with a particular focus on what the city can do to limit the number of these antennas and their proximity to homes. So please take a look at the email that I sent you this afternoon. There's no proposal pending before the city, council members, so I think that at this time you are free to tell me whatever thoughts you have on this or, and if you have any questions about it, I will find the answer, the correct answer and provide it to you and I'd be very glad to. This is coming to Elk Grove, I'm sure. It's only a matter of time and I'm asking the council to be proactive, to look to the future and nip this thing right in the bud because if you, if you, once you allow the first one in the door, there could be a flood of hundreds of them, potentially thousands of them, and then our city would never be this. And good night.
And thank you, Speaker. That will take us on to our third speaker under General Public Comment and I'm checking my comms and all items, but we're still at four speakers total and we're looking to make a connection for our third speaker under General Public Comments, Section 5 of the agenda.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Coming through loud and clear, sir. Please proceed.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Detrick, and council members, and council member Stephanie Nguyen. My name's Jeff Anderson. I am a 14-year Elk Grove homeowner and citizen in the Laguna Estates community. Tonight I bring to you an issue of neighborhood blight of the recycling center that's in place at Elk Grove and Franklin behind the Rayleigh Shopping Center. So this, this recycling center has created a lot of issues in the community behind there. I've brought it to our Laguna Estates Board Meeting and Homewares Association. The president of our community, myself, have met with CBRE on site and the owner of the recycling center, Juan, and we've engaged Rayleigh's management, their facilities manager. The recycling center owner would like to work with the community and move the recycling center. It's currently in the southeast corner behind the nail salon and dry cleaners. And they initially had slated to be put in over behind where there used to be a cryotherapy in the southwest corner behind the smudged substation wall that's about 25 feet tall, which would help dampen the noise. CBRE has been non-compliant in moving the recycling center and we're not sure why. So we're, as a community, we're seeking the help of the council members in the city. Some of the issues that we have ran into from the neighborhood blight are noise complaints. You have rolling garbage cans. You have loud people, cans, bottles, glasses crashing on top of each other, sounds like you're at a bowling alley. You have industrial caster wheels. Again, this is a residential setting where they put more of an industrial application into our backyard. We initially bought the home 14 years ago. There was no mention that this was going to be there and just one day, about two weeks, three weeks ago, got put in our backyard of our community. There's also liquids all over the ground from bottles, people pouring liquids on asphalt, people meeting on the side of the containers at all times of the day, adults making out, people smoking dope. This happens in the morning and in the evening. There's smells from people smoking marijuana, sometimes rotten garbage smells from the liquid that people leave in the containers. So as the community of Laguna Estates and as a homeowner, we're reaching out to the city to engage you guys first distance in getting this, a neighborhood blight, the recycling center moved to a proper location or out of that shopping center entirely.
Mr. Anderson, thank you. This is Stephanie Nguyen. I did receive your email and I received an email from another individual as well too. And what I did do is I did drive out there parts of the day, in the morning, in the afternoon, and in the evening, and confirm everything you said is absolutely correct. And I meant to email you back after I did my own little investigation and looked into it. And I apologize, I haven't had the chances, so I'm glad you're calling in. I'd love to work with you after this. If you could, I have your email, so I'll give you a call tomorrow, work with staff on how we can resolve this.
Okay. I thank, thank you. I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you.
Excellent. Just a quick question. Mr. Dillard, are you on? Is this something that may fall under code enforcement?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Shane Diller, Assistant Director of Development Services. We do have an open code enforcement case on this situation and are actively investigating it. We're looking at it from both a zoning angle as to We're looking at it from both a zoning angle as to what's allowed to be there and not allowed to be there, and we're also looking at the noise, the decibel levels, and the noise activity that's going on, as well as any of the trash and other blight issues that have been reported. We've also connected with the Police Department's POP unit, since there were complaints about drug activity or loitering, that sort of thing. So we're trying to take as holistic an approach to the investigation as we can at this point.
All right, thank you. I just thought I'd check to see whether you have an open case. Thank you.
It's really on our radar.
All right. Okay, next speaker.
I believe we're just making that connection and pulling the speaker into the meeting environment here for our last speaker under Section Five, Public Comment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Lynn Wheat, and I just wanted to make you aware of a meeting that's going to be going on on November 5th. It is the Sacramer, Sac, South American Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And for any members listening in the public, this is an important meeting, and let me read to you from their website why we should be involved. Join us and learn about the condition and future health of your groundwater sub basin. Participate in the process to understand what needs to be done to protect the quality and availability of this valuable resource. Learn why maintaining a sustainable groundwater sub basin matters to the economy, the environment, and the quality of life of our urban and rural communities. We need your input. Join us on November 5th. And the website is S A S B groundwater.org. And I encourage everybody to attend that meeting tonight from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on November 5th. Again, important meeting for all of us as our city considers expanding. Thank you.
And thank you, Speaker. I believe that does conclude our speakers signed up under General Public Comment.
All right, excellent. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item.
That'll take us on to Section Six, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is Jason Bearman, City Manager. Some items to report on this evening. First item is our, some good news on our Grantline Road widening project bid opening. A bid opened this Tuesday for this project. It's a project several years in the making. We reached the milestone by the dedicated efforts of several staff, as well as participation of other outside agencies. Our engineer estimate on the project was $19.18 million, a total of eight contractors submitted bids, with the lowest bid at 13.76 million, significantly under the engineer's estimate. The bids are currently being reviewed by staff, and award recommendation will be sent to the city council at the November 18th city council meeting. City facilities are serving as vote centers for the 2020 general election. Voters can visit any vote center in the county to drop off completed ballots, or they can vote in person. Vote centers provide accessible voting devices and language assistance. Housel residents can also register to vote or update their voter registration at the vote centers. Vote Center at District 56 opened on October 24th and is operating daily from 9:00 to 5:00. A vote center at City Hall and City Council Chambers will open beginning this Saturday, October 31st, and will also operate daily from 9:00 to 5:00. All vote center locations will be open on Election Day, November 3rd, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. For more information on a full listing of vote centers and ballot drop boxes, visit elections.saccounty.net or toll-free at 1-800-762-8019. The city will be hosting workshop tomorrow night, October 29th, at 6:00 PM for the Camer Road Urban Design Study. Under this effort, the city is taking a second look at the Camer Road corridor and considering a new vision that considers today's employment trends and business-type selection priorities. The session will focus on concepts for potential vision. The community is invited and encouraged to participate. More information and the registration link for this virtual meeting available on the Strategic Planning section of the city's website. The city has been accepted into a pilot program offered by SACOG to further telework throughout the region. The program will provide the city with targeted and customized technical assistance in various areas, including human resources, IT, and policy development that will further the city's use of telework, remote work past, post-COVID-19. The program will extend through spring 2021. Police Department is excited to announce a new postgraduate Citizens Academy class to reconnect with residents who have previously participated in Citizens Academy and offer additional information and education. Due to the overwhelming response and current health order, there are three sessions being held in person at District 56. Temperatures are checked at the door, masks are required once they enter the building, and social distancing protocols are in place. There are approximately 30 students in each session. As was, as was just recently mentioned, the city is part of a regional working group dedicated to protecting the quality of and availability of local groundwater. A virtual public meeting is being scheduled on Thursday, November 5th, at 6:00 PM to discuss a groundwater sustainability plan for the South American Sub Basin. Residents are encouraged to attend the meeting and learn why maintaining a sustainable groundwater sub basin matters to the economy, the environment, and the quality of life of our urban and rural communities, and provide their input. Details are available at S A S B groundwater.org. And in accordance with City Hall Day, City Hall will be closed on Wednesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day, and the council meeting has been moved to November 18th. Few brief COVID updates. As a reminder, we, Sacramento County is still in red tier two, according to state blueprint for safer economy. The county went into this tier on September 29th. We're still hoping to get to the orange tier. Unfortunately, this last week, we started going in the wrong direction, along with other counties throughout the state, but we're still optimistic that we'll make some progress in the coming weeks. Sacramento County is urging everyone to prioritize getting a flu shot this season to protect themselves and their families from the flu virus. Flu vaccines have been shown to reduce the risk of flu illness, hospitalization, and death. And finally, on November 5th, Sacramento Public Library will reopen seven locations to the public with limited capacity, including the Elk Grove Library and Elk Grove Boulevard. Patrons may visit the library for browsing and computer use for up to one hour. These locations will be open Tuesdays through Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The library has implemented a number of safety measures to protect public health. These will include requiring all staff and patrons two years or older to wear a face covering, reducing occupancy and seating to allow for proper social distancing, finding hand sanitizing stations, and frequent cleaning of high-touch areas. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Are there any questions, members? I don't think there are any, so thank you. Let's go ahead and move to the next item.
Take us to Section Seven, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
All right, first up to bat is Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I don't have much. I do want to add to Mr. Bearman's plug for everybody getting their flu shot through my day job. I'm working with Dignity Health Methodist in providing free flu shots for our Elk Grove residents and Sacramento residents. What's great to also be able to say is that Senator Pan will be there to administer shots. We're working in partnership with several community-based organizations in Sacramento, and I also added Chicks in Crisis and our very own Elk Grove Food Bank as well, too. And so I encourage our residents, if you're listening, it's a drive-through flu shot. If you have any questions, if you can contact me, I have a consent form that we'd like folks to fill out. It's free, it's quick, we don't ask much questions. Drive in, get your shot done by our senator, and then you can, you can drive off. And the shots are also going to be administered by doctors, pharmacists, and nurses from Dignity Health. And that's going to be November 7th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'll be able to send out information if anybody's interested in that. And that's all I had, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Hume.
All right, so I'm going to pretend like I wasn't a couple of statements into my report before I clicked mute, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had the Connector Joint Powers Authority meeting last Friday and had a great presentation from our consultant, the city's consultant, on the update of doing roundabouts in the Sheldon area from Bond Road to Calvine Road. And the amazing thing about the work that's being done out there on the impact and the effect is that it seems like community sentiment is aligning with data, both from a safety and throughput standpoint, and a minimizing property impact standpoint, that everybody seems to be on the same page, and, and then it should result in a lower cost and creating a neat aesthetic in the Sheldon community. So that was an important presentation, and look forward to making some decisions on that in the future. And then I just wanted to touch on something that the city manager mentioned with respect to the good bid openings on the Grantline project. Significant fact of the, that it came in so far below the engineer's estimate is that, given that we had a $7 million allocation that required an equal match, that means that that $14 million that had to be on the table, this project is fully funded. So that's an important milestone, and going to be good to see that start to come out of the ground. And then had our team meeting Monday, that there was nothing necessarily of interest to Elk Grove, other than Elk Grove was mentioned in RT's strategic plan. And if you have the opportunity to go and check that out, either via the staff report agenda item, or will be posted on RT's website, it is a very, I think, an excellent document of outlining the, the goals and objectives of the agency, the measure, measurable deliverables to meet those, and the tactics that will be employed, and then the scorecard, and just to, just put together in a very clean format. And then the last thing that I have with respect to, to council comments is, has to do with the email that Mr. Graham referenced, and I was just wondering, Mr. City Attorney, if you would please have your staff or yourself get ahead of this issue and research what our scope and breadth is with respect to regulating the placement of those inline antennas on facilities that the city doesn't own, so that to the extent of these carriers do pursue that avenue, we will be prepared to, to know what our options are.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, sir. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sun.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Keep this brief. We had our SACOG board meeting last week. We continue to advocate for Laguna Creek Trail program to try to insert that into a regional trails program that SACOG is, SACOG is developing. And then we had a library authority meeting, and then next week we have our transportation, Sacramento Transportation Committee meeting for SACOG. This Friday, we'll be conducting interviews, final interviews for our, our Executive Director of the Sacramento Transportation Authority. So keep posted how that goes. And then finally, I just want to say, I'm glad to see later on our agenda tonight about the Green Means Go program that we're spanning that, because that, that helps with opportunities for future grant programs at SACOG as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have going on right now that I'd like to promote is the Elk Grove Food Bank 2020 Turkey Drive. I've typically kind of hosted this on behalf of the Elk Grove Food Bank. This year, Kevin Spees has joined me to kind of co-host this, to kind of really, really push this to a higher level. And I'm going to commit to 100 turkeys personally, and I'd like to see if the council would join me in supporting the event as well, and if, Jason, if our team could also place this on one of our electronic distributions, their, the Elk Grove Food Bank's flyer relative to their goal to collect 1,000 turkeys this year. And it has all the details on their flyer of where they can drop that off, the dates of the drop-off, and they're also accepting online donations as well. So it's a great time of year. I mean, you know, there's, they're finding a bigger need for seniors and children that are coming out now, and obviously with the COVID-19, with many, many more people out of work, the, the need is greater than ever. So hopefully, everybody can dig a little deeper that can and help support this event. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And the, the meeting sanitation was canceled this morning. I did have an air quality on the 22nd. Nothing related, directly related to Elk Grove to report, and I'll go ahead and waive the rest of my report. And that is all. Let's move to the next item.
That'll take us on to Section Eight, the Consent Calendar Items.
All right. Again, go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clark, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Indeed, we do have two callers that are getting ready to dial in, and one of the callers had also submitted a written comment that was circulated to the full city council and staff prior to the meeting, but staff will be working towards bringing those callers into our teleconference meeting environment.
Okay.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is Lynn Wheat again, and I just really wanted to thank staff for their report on the SACOG green zones that are proposed for Elk Grove. And I hope that we can look at those closely as it is infill, and I think that it would help with some, addressing some of our housing needs. And when we talked, when we heard about the Women's Commission, I know oftentimes women have difficulty with transportation. So again, if we can begin to look at these infill areas that are suggested, I think it'd be a better way to go than rushing to annexation outside our current city limits. So again, thanks staff for the report. Sure wish there could have been some more discussion in regards to this than hiding it under consent. Have a good evening. Bye.
And that concluded the comments of our first caller on the Consent Calendar Items, and we have a second caller on the Consent Calendar.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Juan Fernandez. Thank you, council, for, for hearing my concern. Audio check, can you hear me okay?
You're coming in loud and clear, Mr. Fernandez. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Carrolli, for your prompt and courteous replies to my questions and for disclosing that the city council will be considering an addendum to the Elk Grove Boulevard traffic plan. As I mentioned in my email, via submitted comments to Mr. Lindgren, I live in the neighborhood of, 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 commonly referred to as Waterman Ranch and/or Waterman Meadows. In 2008, I worked very closely with Councilmember Detrick and Public Works Director Richard Shepherd on a traffic mitigation plan for Rancho Drive. At that time, the city council was actively working with neighborhoods where traffic safety was a problem, and they allocated budget to address the concerns of property owners regarding the safety of automobile traffic in their neighborhoods. A traffic study of Rancho Drive was conducted, and it was determined that the median speed of traffic through our neighborhood was approximately 36 miles per hour. As you're all aware, that is more than 10 miles an hour over the speed limit of 25 miles per hour for a residential neighborhood. The traffic engineer designed a speed mitigation plan that included three speed bumps on Rancho. Only two-speed bumps were installed. However, I can personally attest that the two-speed bumps have been very effective in slowing the current, and I emphasize current, amount of traffic on Rancho Drive. There are many children that are much safer now as they ride their bicycles down Rancho and across the Laguna Creek Bridge to their way to and from Elk Grove Elementary School. My concern with the change in plan is the addition of another stoplight on Elk Grove Boulevard at Kent Street. There is already an increase in the amount of cut-through traffic during peak traffic due to the stoplight at Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road. Many people turn left on School Street and head north, then turn right onto Rancho to avoid the backup at Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman. They then make the unprotected left northbound onto Waterman Road from Rancho instead of waiting at the existing stoplight. Should there be another stoplight on Elk Grove Boulevard, my fear is that more drivers will use this perceived shortcut to avoid both stoplights. I have to ask, is there significant residential development happening on, on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard that would warrant a new stoplight? Or is this new stoplight in anticipation of more traffic due to the changes at Elk Grove Old Town Plaza and the entertainment hub south of the plaza? While I fully support the Old Town Plaza and entertainment hub While I fully support the Old Town Plaza and Entertainment Hub, I respectfully request that the council revisit the original traffic mitigation plan for Rancho Drive or expand the traffic analysis beyond just the anticipated traffic from the entertainment hub and plaza. I also want to point out that there have been numerous accidents at the intersection of Waterman Road and Rancho as people get impatient waiting to make the left onto Waterman and even after the installation of the two speed bumps. A young boy riding his bicycle to school was hit by a car at the corner of Monocresta and Rancho. Thank you for your consideration of retaining a protected crosswalk at Kent Street and not adding another stoplight. At a minimum, I request the city council consider expanding the traffic calming measures on School Street and Rancho Drive for the safety of the family and young children that call Rancho Drive home. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lynn Gren, any other speakers?
I'm just checking my comms, but no other speakers under the consent calendar items.
All right, excellent. At this point, we want to go ahead and close public comment. Members, I have a consent calendar in front of me. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the consent, but I'd like to make a comment on item 8.12. And I have a question on item 8.16.
Okay, you want to go ahead and ask your question first before we move this or?
Well, friendly amendment, can we remove 8.19 to just have maybe Bob Murdock address it, comment that was just made?
Sure, I'll amend the motion to exclude 8.19.
Thank you, second.
Okay, got a motion, second roll call, please.
Well, I still have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay. So on 8.16, the contract is for a not-to-exceed amount that is just over $200,000 a year for the six-year period. And then in looking at the staff report, that's a sliding scale based on the amount of funds that we would have invested with this group. Do we have any idea of how much we would be looking to invest with them initially?
This is Brad Kane, your Director of Finance. And initially, we would be looking to put a $15 million with the investment firm. And then as we monitor their activity and if things continue to be positive, the city would continue to roll over maturing investments over to the investment firm to make selections, investment selections.
So that initial amount was 15,15 or?
Correct, 15.
And then, do you have an idea? And I realize you probably don't have the investment schedule in front of you of what the sort of top end of the amount that we'd put with this firm would be? In other words, would they reach that $200 million level that would trigger the $220,000 a year payment?
They would.
They would?
Over time, because we have laddered maturities. And so even if you go to the furthest out, say, more like four and a half years, you would have recycled all of that money and reinvested it again.
Got you, within about four and a half years, okay. And so then, my final question, is there any kind of performance benchmark tied to their fee amount as far as the return they make on our investments?
Could you repeat the question? Or is there fee based on the benchmarking? Is that your question?
Well, not so much their fee, but do we have any sort of performance metrics to be sure that they're showing a good discern in order to earn their fee?
Yes, there are performance measurements, a benchmark that will be put in place. And that hasn't been selected yet. We're going to have a discussion to pick what best fits with Elk Grove. Because part of the benchmark selection is what is the city's investment philosophy? What is our maturity tolerance? What is our liquidity needs? And all of that informs the selection of the benchmarking.
Great. Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it. And then my comment on item 8.12 is I just want to thank staff for considering this item. I'd been approached by some folks in our veteran community who have made an indelible impact on the Elk Grove community, either through previous residency or before there was a city of Elk Grove with defined boundaries. And so just to open this up and recognize their service, I think, is a great thing. And so I'm fully in support.
Awesome, thank you. So we have motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
And just prior to that roll call vote, that motion and the second is for the approval of the consent calendar, but with the removal of item 8.19 for separate consideration. So it would be for the approval of the remainder of the consent calendar. That roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
So that takes care of items 8.1 through 8.18. And then for the separate considerations, 8.19.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Is Bob Murdock around? I was wondering, Mr. Murdock, if you could address the gentleman's comment.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Sun. This is Bob Murdock, Public Works Director for the City of Elk Grove. The traffic signal at Kent and Elk Grove Boulevard is actually being triggered by redevelopment on Railroad Street. And we did anticipate a concern about cut-through traffic if a signal was placed at Kent and Elk Grove Boulevard. So as part of the traffic analysis, we looked at the current condition, and this was in 2019, of actual cut-through traffic at the time, and then analyzed whether the signal would add to the cut-through traffic. So in 2019, we identified four cars, on average, in the AM peak, cutting through the neighborhood and eight cars in the PM peak, cutting through the neighborhood. The analysis looked at the delay in the operations that would result from a traffic signal installation above that of just a marked crosswalk. And what it determined was that the signal would not degrade operations along the corridor. Therefore, it'd be unlikely that motorists would change their current path of travel and decide to cut through if they weren't already doing it. So the result of the traffic signal, based on the analysis that was done, is that it would not increase cut-through traffic above what currently exists. Now, Mr. Fernandez did have concern about traffic calming, noted that, I guess at the time, only two of three speed bumps were installed. We did provide him, Mr. Carrolli did provide him the link to our traffic calming program. Would be more than happy to sit down and talk to him, my staff, talk to him about that program and how we could go about looking at his neighborhood to see if Rancho Drive needed additional calming and perhaps other streets might need additional calming. Would happy to work through that with him in the neighborhood if that's needed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. And the other, I just want to add is, you know, even if we proceed as is, you'll continue to monitor and we can make adjustments if need be.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. I'll be happy to move the item.
Ken, any other questions?
I'd just say, this is Vice Mayor Detrick. I'm in support of making sure we're monitoring this as well because we've seen this time and time again where there's an unintended consequence that is developed from changing traffic patterns. And I would hate to see an additional major burden put on a neighborhood to alleviate one problem and then create another.
Absolutely.
All right, anyone else? Seeing there are none, there's a motion and Vice Mayor, is that a second?
Sure.
Okay, got a motion, second. Roll call vote, please.
For the roll call vote to approve the resolution under item 8.19, I will be starting with Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
The resolution of item 8.9 passes 5-0.
All right, let's move on.
As we progress down our agenda, we have no public hearings under Section 9. So that will take us on to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations. And we'll be starting that section off with 10.1, which is to consider a resolution approving the artwork for Singin' Coward Park, selected by the review panel and approved by the Arts Commission, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the artist.
Good evening, City Council. This is Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager and the staff liaison to the public art program. I'm very pleased this evening to present the recommended artwork for Singin' Coward Park, just part of the Present for the Arts program. To talk more about the project itself is Shelley Willis, our Art Management Consultant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am going to share my screen now so that you can see the presentation. Are you able to see it?
Not as of yet. We don't have a visual, but your audio is coming through clear.
All right.
There we go. It's on its way.
Okay, good. All right, when it's up, let me know.
You are now, you've hit the slideshow mode, so you're on your title page there.
All right, great. Thank you so much. All right, so I'd like to start the presentation out by just thanking the Artist Selection Panel. Whenever we do an artist selection process, we have a team of people that guide the selection of every artist and approve the approval of the proposals. And for the Singin' Coward Park project, the volunteer panel included Sally Gutrich, who is an arts commissioner, Sarma Kasari, who's an art professor at Kusuma's River College, Paul Muten, who's the Chief of Planning, Design and Construction at Kusuma's Community Services District, Lupi Marietta, who's an artist and City of Elk Grove Program Manager in the Graphics and Multimedia Division, Leslie Sandifer, who's the City of Elk Grove Arts Commissioner, and Umar Shergill, who is a community representative. All of these folks spend many hours looking at applications and vetting the artists and listening to interviews and having long and important discussions about the choices that they make. So I just wanted to thank all of them for serving on this panel. So the Singin' Coward Park Art Program art selection process began in September 2019 when the Arts Commission approved the art program with a budget of $28,000 for the public artwork. That budget includes the artist design of the project, fabrication and installation of the artwork. The request for qualifications for the project was launched and the deadline was February 27, 2020. We received 29 applications. At that time, the Artist Selection Panel and the Arts Commission determined that they wanted to reopen the application process because they didn't feel like they received enough diversity in the application process. So we reopened the process with a deadline of June 2020 and we received 37 applications with a much more fuller representation, a diverse group of artists. So the Artist Selection Panel met. They reviewed all 37 applications, including, you know, slides of the artist's past work and resumes and a letter of interest. They reviewed all those materials and they narrowed it down to four finalists to interview and to look at a proposal. So those four finalists put together images of the artwork that they would present, as well as a written statement about the project and a budget. The panelists interviewed them and they unanimously approved Ritu Atwal for the project. And of course, that project proposal went to the Arts Commission and they also unanimously approved Ritu Atwal at their meeting on September 24, 2020. So I just wanted to let you know a little bit about Ritu Atwal, the artist selected for this project. She was actually born in India. She arrived in California in 1995. She's a self-taught artist. She's local. She's here in Sacramento County. She's created a large-scale, she's created many large-scale commercial murals in the Sacramento area and was a participant in the City of Rock in California's Off the Rails Public Art Project. This will be her first major public art project, but she's an accomplished painter and sculptor. So the project that she's, that was approved, is based on the kara. And the kara is a simple steel bangle that's worn on the wrist of Sikhs. The bangle itself is circular. And what Ritu is proposing, which I'll get to in just a second, are two sculptures that are based upon this form, this bangle form. And this bangle form that kara represents many, many things. The circular form represents eternity. The steel material represents strength, endurance and the unbreakable resilience of its wear. There's, the form itself is not tube-like. It actually has an angle to it, an edge, that forms a flat portion on the bangle. And that edge is meant to be representative of protection. Protection not only of the Sikh faith, but all who seek protection against any threat to their own faiths. The symbol is very universal. The simplicity of the design is a reminder to always remain humble. It's an equalizer. The kara transcends genders for, it's worn both by men and women. It transcends socioeconomic status because all Sikhs, rich or poor, are entitled to wear it. And it's really a universally recognized form for fellow Sikhs. So what she proposed is to create two karas in the park, each eight feet in diameter. And they'll be approximately six inches thick. And they'll be inscribed or etched with a phrase, poem, words that represent Mr. Singh and Mr. Coward. The sculptures will be made with a matte brushed stainless steel. So this gives you a sense of sort of the scale of the project. This next slide shows the location of the sculptures in the park. So you can see that they're located at opposite ends of the park. And they're located in what was a planter that faces these circular contemplative spaces in the park. These are benches and then inside this circular area on both sides of the park, a tree is planted. So in this next slide, you get a sense, here's the detail of that site. Right here is the sculpture itself. So it's facing again this circular area. And then on this side, this illustration sort of shows how the piece will frame this contemplative space where people sit and, you know, perhaps meditate, you know, rest in the shady garden space, et cetera. So that's the proposed project. And we're going to try to get Ritu Atwal on the line. I'm not sure if we can, to make any comments. And then she and myself and Lana Yoshimura can answer any questions or entertain any comments that you may have about the project or process for selecting Ritu. So is it possible to get Ritu on the line?
Yes, we have her connected right now.
Oh, great. All right. Ritu, did you want to say anything?
Oh, I just wanted to say I'm so excited and so proud to be part of this project. And it's just amazing how the city has come together, along with the Sikh community, to do this. So it feels like a very historic and great moment to be part of. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ritu. I wish we could, we could see everybody and really see.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you have any questions at all or comments?
This is Mayor Lee. I do have a question for the artists. The two, the, the two figures, would they be in the likeness of the two gentlemen who were murdered?
They're not figures. They are represented, they are, it's like a bangle that all Sikhs wear. So.
I, I meant the likeness of the statues.
The, the.
The. They're all form that is very recognizable. So there won't be any likeness to a figure as such, or to, to, all bangles are, they're very distinctly, they have a distinct look. So all karas have the same look. So when you see it, you will know that it is a kara which is worn by all Sikh men and women. So, and, but it will be labeled as the kara of, with each name, the kara of Gomage and the kara of Singh and the kara of Mr. Atwal. So that way it'll be distinctly personalized to them.
Okay, so the, the statues themselves aren't going to be the same likeness of the, the two gentlemen?
No, Mr. Mayor, the sculptures are these eight-foot stainless steel rings or bangles that I showed in the presentation. So they're these simple steel circular shapes that are in the form of this kara or this bangle that.
Backwards in the presentation to reillustrate where, what the artwork will look like?
Yes.
Mayor, I believe the issue is. Mayor, I believe the issue is the, the statue is just for demonstration of size.
Ah, I see.
To the.
Yeah. Oh, I see.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's the confusion.
Yeah, the sculpture itself is just this illustration of this stainless steel ring. Yes, I see where you're, so this is actually the image of the, of the sculpture itself. So this stainless steel form that you can't see, but there's an edge to it that's sort of flat. This.
Ms. Willis, just so you know, I think what, I think if you just have to close out of what you're sharing and then kind of reshare the presentation, right now, we just have a blank screen.
Okay. All right.
I think if you exit out of sharing your screen and then kind of go back into the presentation, that might be the best way to get back to that point.
Okay. I am doing that now.
So for clarity, it's, it's just a basic circle.
Correct.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, I think the confusion lies because we have a man standing, like a figure of a man standing in front of the bangle. That was just to show the proportions of the size. The size being eight feet tall and what that would look like next to a six-foot man. Just to show the scale of the project, because I really wanted to stand out in any, in the space. And I want it to be seen from a distance. And just to let you, give you a little bit more, elaborate a little bit more on the, what the kara means, is that any Sikh, any Sikh person, person from Sikh culture, even from the time they're born, even children, they're given a bangle to wear. And the bangle is made out of steel. And it, it kind of represents, it is an identity of the Sikh culture. And we wear it for the, for all of our lives. As we grow up, we get bigger bangle. You can get a more elaborate one. But the bangle in its purest essence is a steel circle with a sharp edge, a slightly sharp edge. And it has a very, it has many meanings to it. It's very important to us. It's, it's very representative of, of our belief and of our identity. And that's why it's very personal. So it is the most simple and profound way to represent the two men because there is no way two turban Sikhs would not wear a bangle for all of their life. We're very proud of it too. So that is why I chose that as a symbol for the two men. And I named each bangle after them. So I just speak as if it's one of the karas was the kara of Mr. Gomage and the other kara belonged to Mr. Atwal. So that was, that was the symbolism behind it. And I wanted to keep it simple because simplicity of the bangle is what is so profound in its meaning. And in the presentation, you'll see all the meanings behind this simple steel circular bangle. The circle itself, it means eternity of our faith and of our culture. So it has many, many meanings behind why it's steel, why it's shaped the way it is, and what it means to us. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, first of all, I just want to say, I think that is amazing that you came up with such a simple, yet profound, recognizable testament, Ms. Atwal. I think it's, it just, sometimes the, the most simple designs are the most elegant. And this is, certainly fits that bill. The one thing that I would ask, and I'm, I'm sure you've probably thought of this, but the typical bangles are, they have like a V shape on the inside of them. And so I assume you're going to recreate that in this larger-than-life version and just make sure that we have some weep holes at the bottom so that they don't capture water and become breeding grounds for mosquitoes.
That's.
That's a very good point. And the metal fabricator that I spoke to, he assured we will be watertight, waterproof, so that you'll feel it really well. And we'll have some sort of base to kind of nail it into a cement bottom, under the ground, sort of, sort of thing.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
That's a really good point. And I, yeah, can you hear me?
Councilmember Sun.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't want to cut you off, Ms. Atwal. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, and I, and I'm, and I'm so glad you made that comment. And thank you so much for talking about simplicity and profoundness. And you're absolutely right. That's exactly what I was thinking. Well, I wanted simple, but meaning, extremely meaningful, because the reason you picked artists instead, instead of just, we weren't here to construct something. We're here to represent as artists. That's our job, to make it as meaningful as we can. And because it's also a place of meditation where it's placed, it's kind of like a resting area, it also allows that peace to come with it because of its simplicity. And it's in that negative space in the circle that you'll find that peace and meaning. So thank you for the comments.
Member.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Atwal, this is Councilmember Sun. I just wanted to also just commend you for a very elegant, thoughtful and, and meaningful design. I look forward to seeing it, it come to fruition. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, this is Vice Mayor Detrick. You know, I thought, you know, how appropriate for the two gentlemen that were, had unfortunately early departure from this world to bring something in from their culture. And I think the, the story that you explained, and as was mentioned, the simplicity, I think is, is beautiful. The one question I would have is, is there going to be a placard to represent what this symbolizes? Because the average person would see the artwork and not have a full understanding the way that you explained it. And I think it's very powerful with your explanation of what this beautiful art piece will be.
So I'll, I'll jump in here. This is Shelley Willis again. The panel discussed the, the very same thing. And it was agreed that there should be a, with all the public artworks, there is a label that have, has the artist's name, title, medium dimensions of the artwork. But in this case, we would add an extended label that explains the concept.
Excellent.
All right. If there's no more questions, let's go ahead and open for a public comment. Mr. Clerk, is there any members of the public sign up to speak?
We do have a caller that is, has requested to be pulled into the meeting this evening. And I believe staff are coordinating pulling our one caller on item ten point one into the conversation. I think we've made the connection and now it's just pulling them into the meeting.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Liz Meyer, Arts Commissioner. And I wish to hope to get the support for this elegant, simple, but breathtaking sculptures. I think it would really enhance the park. And I'm pretty excited that our city got the opportunity to represent one of our cultures that are so important. Unfortunately, it took a tragic event to do that. But it was interesting to see how everyone comes together and we have the best outcome for the city.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Lindgren?
I believe that was our only speaker for item ten point one. We, we had the artist on the line. And that concludes, I'm just checking my comms real quick, but that concludes all the folks that we have signed up to speak on the item.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and additional council deliberation. Members?
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Emphatically second.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion in a second. The only thing I wanted to add is, you know, I'm really excited. This is a, an important monument to recognize something from the past that has really plagued the Elk Grove community. And I'm looking forward to this coming to fruition. I'm looking forward to this piece. Right, got a motion second.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I just wanted to add, we did have somebody just chime in that wished to address the item.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like to, we can do what we can to pull them in. It'll just take us a little bit.
Yeah, let's pause and let's pull the public, the member of the public in.
Okay. Just a moment while we coordinate that on our side. It came in. And I've got that item sent over to staff that'll have the phone contact. And then we just need to make the outreach to the individual and then be able to pull them into the meeting environment. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Sometimes it's just this timing that occurs with our teleconference environment. To put it out there for our public, the sooner we get requests to speak, the easier it is for us to coordinate on our side. So for folks that I know that as deliberation goes, sometimes it sparks folks' interest to, to speak. But it does help us if you give us a little bit more heads, heads up of your interest to speak on items.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. This is Umar Shergill. And I just wanted to comment, I, I expect and from the comments, I understand that the council's going to support. But I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that the, the staff that I worked with on this from day one, and the Arts Commission has just been so thoughtful. And I cannot say enough about the work that they did to ensure that the community was heard and that we had diverse artists who were involved. And it's just a pleasure to work with, with them on the panel selecting this art. The art itself is very moving. We have a number of very fine pieces that were submitted. And, you know, from, from the time of the incident itself, I know the council members have just been so thoughtful in supporting the Sikh community. And Councilmember Detrick, the then mayor, was just a leader in, in making sure that the Sikh community knew that they were accepted and supported. And, you know, we're getting closer to a day when we can open this park and memorialize the sacrifices of those men and the families. And I really appreciate everything the city has done. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else, Mr. Lindgren?
Do an attack. And I think that closes out our request to speak on item ten point one this evening.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
For the roll call vote for the approval of the resolution under item ten point one, I will be starting with Councilmember Wen.
Absolutely a yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Absolutely a yes.
Councilmember Sun.
Absolutely yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Yes, yes, and yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Enthusiastically, yes.
And the item under ten point one, the resolution will be approved by a five oh vote.
Thank you so much.
That will take us on to our final item of the agenda, which is item ten point two. And let's receive the Fiscal Year's two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five Capital Improvement Program Quarterly Status Report for the first quarter of two thousand twenty, twenty one.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Kevin Bucy, Capital Program Manager, presenting item ten point two, the Capital Improvement Program Quarter One Report. So the Capital Improvement Program Quarterly Report discusses what projects were completed in the last quarter. It also provides a project status as far as project scope, what the current phase of that project is, whether it's in engineering, right-of-way, environmental or construction. It also provides a schedule with a twelve-month look ahead and the estimated project cost. The quarterly report also addresses grants. It provides the grants that we applied for and/or the grants that we were awarded in the last quarter. That's the content of the quarterly report that we prepare every three months. I'm going to provide a overview of some of the capital projects that have been completed last quarter and would be completed in this current quarter and then next year as well. So it'll be about a twelve-month look ahead. The first project I want to talk about is the Franklin Boulevard Cycle Track. That project is on Franklin Boulevard between Big Horn Boulevard and Kusuma's River Boulevard. It is a joint project between the City of Elk Grove and the City of Sacramento. That project's completed. It is, what it is, is a cycle track is a separated bike facility that will provide improved biking along Franklin Boulevard to Light Rail Station on Kusuma's River Boulevard. And so this project just got completed. And it's one of our, it's the first cycle track within the city. The second project is the Shed A Channel Landscaping Enhancement and Trail Project. This is on, along Drainage Shed A between Spring Flower Drive and Elk Grove Boulevard. It is, is in construction now. It should be completed in two thousand twenty. The slide on your bottom right shows the existing condition. It's essentially just a gravel trail. And what I've shown the top right is what it should like, look like when the trail is completed. It should be a paved trail with landscaping at Spring Flower Drive and Elk Grove Boulevard as well. We've also got Elk Grove Farm Road and Elk Grove Park Sidewalk Infill. What we're trying to do is to provide a continuous sidewalk on the east side of Elk Grove floor from East Stockton up, past the regional park to the high school. You'll see on the right, that is the kind of a, an existing condition that we're trying to correct. That project is also planned to advertise and be constructed in two thousand twenty-one as well. So that's the last of those. Alternative Transportation Modes Project, we're going to talk about community enhancements. This first project is Oasis Park. Oasis Park was designed by the Kusuma CSD and is being administered through construction by Kusuma CSD. And the city collects development impact fees that are programmed through the Capital Improvement Program. And the city collects development impact fees that are programmed through the Capital Improvement Program. This project is uh between Whitlock Parkway and Pappy Ridge Road. It is a 20-acre park. It's currently in construction. I've got a few construction photos here. It's all going to be completed in 2021. So very similar to that is the Singin' Car Park, which was discussed under item 10.1. Um, this park is north of Whitlock Parkway and east of Big Horn Boulevard. It is similarly designed by Consumers CSD. It is a five-acre park and its construction is anticipated in 2021 as well. And then we have the District 56 Nature Area. The conceptual plan is shown on your on your left with the whole District 56 site. It is on located on Big Horn Boulevard, north of Lots Parkway, south of Civic Center Drive. These are construction photo, fairly recent construction photos for this project. Primarily, we're showing the the pond construction. And I'm I'm gonna show a quick video of the pond construction. And at the top of this video, you will see the date changing as we progress through this construction. So bear with me one minute. Okay, we're gonna move forward in the Old Town Plaza. The Old Town Plaza is a plaza that we're currently in construction in Old Town. It is on Elk Grove Boulevard and near Grove Street, along Grove Street. It's gonna construct a pavilion that's gonna be used for Farmers Market and other community gathering spaces. This is a fairly recent project of construction of this plaza project. And joining that project is the Grove Street Project. Uh, this Grove Street um is between Elk Grove Boulevard uh all the way to the South Terminus. We're planning on reconstructing the existing road, adding two parking lots as well as some on-street parking and other utilities. Here is uh recent construction of that street along with some sidewalk that's being installed. Here's a similar picture here showing sidewalk on the east side or the west side of a railroad street as we look south. So I'm gonna do a short video on this as well. Okay, so that was our last uh kind of transportation project. That project will be completed in 2021. And talk a little bit more about some of our transportation projects. This is the 2020 pavement slurry seal resurfacing project. This was fairly recently completed in 2020. The map shows the areas in 2020 that were either resurfaced or had some sort of overlay. This is part of our pavement management program. Uh, we do this type of project every year. So we just kind of complete the 2020 projects. Here is some completed project photo showing that were completed in those areas. We've also got the Sheldon Road Bike Lane and Center Turn Lanes Project. Uh, we anticipate that being completed this year. Uh, that's on Sheldon Road between Elk Grove Floren Road and Wyron Road. We are reconstructing the existing road to add bike lanes and a center turn lane. Um, center turn lane um is gonna be used for all these um side streets and for their access. Here are some construction photos, fairly recent construction photos showing our westbound lane um construction as we try to widen out the road for that center turn lane and those bike lanes. Grantline Road Widening, which Jason talked about previously, we had the bid opening Tuesday. That project, we anticipate coming back to council the next council meeting November for Ward. It's should be completed in 2021. We will be reconstructing Grantline Road from Waterman to Bradshaw from a two-to-a-four-lane facility. We'll also be signaling the intersection of Grantline and Mosher and the signaling the intersection of Bradshaw and Grantline. We'll also be relining Bradshaw to tee into Grantline as well. So that will be another uh big project coming next year. We've also got the Camera Road Reconstruction. We are reconstructing, uh, planning on reconstructing Camera Road from Bruceville all the way to about Lent Ranch Parkway. Uh, that project is similarly, we're advertising that in January, ideally January 2021. It'll be, we'll reconstruct the existing road as a two-lane road with a divided two-lane road with wider shoulders and in some locations, a centered two lanes or a two-way left turn lane. And the final project we have is the Artill Road Rehabilitation and Bike Lane Project. That also is anticipated to be in construction in 2021. So the areas in yellow on the map on your left is along Waterman Road and Elk Grove Floren will either get resurfaced and bike lanes added or a more of a reconstruction with bike lanes added. We had completed a similar project on Waterman Road north of Bond. It'll look very similar for many of the segments we're doing on Waterman Road. And without available for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Got a question, just a couple of of.
Yep, go ahead, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Councilmember Sun. A couple of comments. First of all, Kevin, great job on the presentation. It's always um, you know, it's exciting to see the projects that we have completed or in progress and that we should be completed within the next year or so. Uh, you know, and I really appreciate something that you sent out an email on uh the other day with respect to the railroad street project and preserving the old rail spur lines and trying to incorporate them into the new project in various uh ways. I just think that speaks to our city's tagline of of bright future and proud heritage and that we we do try and respect uh what was here before us and incorporated into where we're going. So thank you for that.
Yeah, um, I also just want to quickly, uh, you know, mention our appreciation, Kevin, for all the public works and staff that goes into making these projects happen. And as your video showed, I mean, you know, it takes a while for these things to come to fruition. And it was the time lapse and things. I think that was really illustrative and of all the hard work that you guys have been doing. So just want to commend you guys. Thank you very much.
Uh, I have to say this um, this uh brief is is really helpful, especially with the um laptop camera. I'm excited. Let's get it done. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
And I'm excited to see these projects. But Kevin, I, these are supposed to be done before December this year, before I got off the council. What happened? Just kidding.
We didn't, we didn't want you to walk away with too much credit. We we told Kevin to put you down just a little bit.
Don't worry about it. There's other council members that'll take all the credit. I'm not gonna worry about that.
We'll invite you back.
Well, I appreciate it. Love to still be involved.
We're not letting you go.
Awesome. Anyone else? Any questions? All right, none. All right, uh, let's go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, is anyone signed up to speak?
I had no individuals signed up to speak for this item, and I'm checking my comms and no one has requested to speak on this item.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Uh, additional deliberation and direction, members?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, uh, since there is nothing, uh, received the file. Thank you very much and um continue the work. And I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:42 PM. Thank you, everyone. See you next time.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.